I'd like to call this meeting of the July 24th, 2018, a city work session to order, please, if you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda this evening is an update from the Riley County Police Department. Director Brad Shown is here. Thank you.
Mayor Commissioners? Oh, that's just a few people come to speak. Okay.
You want me to fill that out? You're on the agenda. You don't have to sign in.
Just a few things to update you on. I want to start with the second quarter Uniform Crime Report that went to the, well, to the state and to the feds and to the Law Board at the July meeting, after the July meeting, because people generally have an interest in these things. When one looks at Riley County in total, all of the Manhattan, City of Manhattan, all the small communities and the rural areas, Part One crime for the year is down 7.3 percent. That's relatively good news following the last couple of years when it's been up to a minor degree, less than that, but to a minor degree. But it's always a good news, bad news thing. The good news is that it's down. The bad news is that when one looks at the serious Part One crimes, that is those against people, they're up by 11.5 percent, a total of 87 versus 97. But as is typically the case, when one looks at Part One UCR crimes, the lesser offenses, the burglary, larcenies, and auto thefts drive the train, and they are significantly lower, so the overall rate is lower. I would say that when I look at these numbers of concern is that the robberies have gone from seven to 13. If you've been watching the newspaper lately, you know we've had a series of those, just in the very recent past of four. We believe those are probably connected, and while I'm not in a position to comment on those cases because they're still active, we feel we've got a pretty good handle on that, and at least the individuals responsible for those robberies probably won't be doing that at any point in the near future, but time will tell. When one breaks that down a little bit farther and looks at just the city of Manhattan, which I know is of particular interest to you all, the overall rate is about the same, and I say this every time I talk to people about this, Manhattan's an 800-pound gorilla. I mean, most of what happens in Riley County happens in the city of Manhattan. The overall rate is down 7.3. The picture's a little bit better on the person crimes side of things. It's only up 10.3. But interestingly, when one looks at those robberies I talked about previously, all of those occurred in the city of Manhattan, so that's what's driving the train on that end. There are some other, one other minor increase, but not statistically significant on aggravated assaults. But again, when one looks at burglaries, larcenies, and auto thefts, the property crimes are down enough that it drags the overall crime, Part One crime rate down. So we'll take that. It would be a little bit rosier picture if what was dragging the crime rate down were the person crimes, clearly because they're more important to the individuals affected by them, but that's almost never the case since in terms of the number of them that occur, it's a significantly lower amount. Couple of things to report. One that you all may notice and the public will no doubt take notice of, some months ago, quite a number of months ago in fact, the Law Board forwarded to the county commission a request for facilities improvement for a storage building at the southeast corner of the lot on which the law enforcement center sits. The county has progressed sufficiently with that project and put it out for bid and everything. Those bids are back, and the project is actually going to start construction on the last day of the month. It's anticipated to last about six months, and you may recall from previous briefings that what it will do is turn that current building that is oriented to run north and south, it will add on to that building and basically make an L out of it by adding on an east-west addition to the south end of that building. But that's supposed to start at the end of the month and should last, as I said, about six months. So it'll be completed somewhere around here. And yes, ma'am?
I was just curious. I guess I just, listening as a member of the public, that it was more of a storage place for cars. But if it's going to take six months, then it must be more sophisticated than a garage.
Well, it is a little more sophisticated than a garage. It also involves some remodel of the south part of the existing building to work around some evidence, storage areas. There's some work they need to do to make the HVAC system work with the existing part of the building. There's some underground work that they have to do. There's a little bit of slope stuff that they have to do, although the design the county eventually settled on greatly reduced that amount of work. So, you know, I mean, it takes what it takes, and they bid it to take six months.
No, I just didn't know what to expect, but it sounds marked.
Right. It should look pretty similar to the existing building. The only thing that will be kind of out of character when one looks at the existing building is at the far west end of that addition, you'll see what we call a lean-to. I'm sure Bruce McMillan calls it something much nicer than that, but it's basically a covered parking area. We did that to save some money on the overall construction costs. But it is generally intended, as you correctly asserted, to handle some of our larger specialty vehicles that we can barely cram into the space that we've got now, which means then that nothing else can happen in that space. And if we do have to have something else happen in that space, notably anytime we take a vehicle into our possession that we need to do some work on processing it as evidence or something like that, we have to kick out of one of those climate-controlled spaces, vehicles the contents of which require climate control, and figure out what else to do with them. We have variously parked them around our lot, on the lower part of the lot behind the jail. We take them up to county buildings and that sort of thing. Last I was here, there was some discussion about traffic enforcement. That was kind of a two-pronged discussion. Part of it, as I recall, was some questions that came from the commission, and I believe at least Commissioner McKee, and I can't recall who else, asked some questions about enforcement and traffic as it tied into what was going on in municipal court. I asserted at the time that we had not, we hadn't really been driving the train too hard on traffic enforcement because accident numbers were low, and in particular, preventable accidents were low. In fact, they were as low as they'd been historically for quite some time. However, we noticed an uptick in those accidents at the end of 2017, in the last quarter, and decided to step up the enforcement correspondingly. I heard from Captain Fink, probably been two or three weeks ago now, that the number of citations we have written and the number of stops overall have increased by about 25 percent. I had some preliminary discussions with Kyle Mangus, letting him know what we were seeing on our end there, just so he was aware of what you all might expect in terms of having to process all that down in municipal court. And so that's kind of where we sit with that. It kind of went the direction I expected that it would. I didn't know exactly how much it would increase, but I knew it was probably going to go up, and as it turns out, it has. I might add, for public consumption at least, that you're going to see a goodly amount of that enforcement spread throughout the week, but particular emphasis will probably occur on Wednesdays because of the way we schedule now and because of the staffing that we have on Wednesdays. However, while I say that, I hate for anyone in the public to think that the rest of the days a week is fair game. You can run red lights if you want. I can tell you, I've seen a lot of people being stopped around town for any one of a number of reasons. And if you're a member of the motoring public and you don't want your insurance rates to go up, then I would encourage you to stop at stop signs, among other things. Just today, I was coming back on Fort Riley Boulevard, and I watched a car ahead of me hit his brakes, get on the gas, hit his brakes, and then go through the stoplight on Fort Riley Boulevard, probably seven seconds late. I couldn't believe it. I wasn't in a position to be able to stop him because there were several cars between me and them, and of course, they all stopped ahead of me. But that's the sort of stuff that just aggravates the heck out of people when they see it, and that's the sort of stuff that I know I personally talked with Rich about sickening the guys on, those egregious types of violations. So we'll be looking for that stuff.
I might call your attention to the, I was at Coco Bolos about a month ago for lunch, and happened to sit in the front, near the front window, and about, there were five cars that were west-
U-turns.
-westbound did a U-turn in order to get into Starbucks.
I had heard Kyle, Kyle, can you-
I mentioned it. He's not listening.
Did you? Sorry, I'm looking over to you, and you guys are obviously talking about something. She was just talking about Coco Bolos and the westbound U-turns on Blument. I know I had heard something about that. You guys got some plan afoot there?
We've actually already installed the no-U-turn sign.
Have you?
Okay.
You've installed it?
Yes.
Actually, I do remember that now because I remember Rich Fink telling me that, and he said he was going to sic the guys on that and make that one of their locations that they paid particular attention to. Not having specific numbers on that.
That wasn't during prime coffee time either. That was just during the noon, from like 12 to 1, so it seems to me, yeah.
Well, we'll try to get down there during prime coffee time.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for-
When is primed coffee time, by the way?
Good job. Good job.
Sorry, my-
I broke your train of thought. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Actually, I drug my finger across my iPad screen and went to the wrong location. On a little bit lighter note, I might add that the Battle of the Badges was going on today. For those of you who haven't heard, it's a blood drive. We kind of play it off as a battle between the fire department and the police department, although EMS is up there as well, hence the generic term Battle of the Badges. I don't know exactly how it turned out. I don't see Scott here, so I'm safe in saying the rumor had it. We were significantly in the lead. We'll see. I'm not sure his story would be the same, but that's my-
In the absence of anyone to counter it, I'm going to claim-
Yeah, that's my story, and I'm sticking with it. So, but yeah, Haley came back and told me that. But regardless of how that turns out, we take fun poking at each other over it. But it's a good thing for the community, and I know that we've been playing it up internally quite a bit, and I know they're always happy to have the people show up to do to donate. The last thing I had that I wanted to bring up, and again, it's sort of a public consumption thing, but I suspect that you all have some interest in it or may have some interest in it, is that we recently conducted, I think it was just last week actually, the third of what we are beginning to suspect will be an annual active shooter drill. This one was conducted at Manhattan High School's west campus. I know it drew a considerable amount of attention. It seems that every year this grows. I looked at a list of the agencies that have participated this year, and frankly, even I was surprised at how many different agencies. We had Pot County over there, Womigo over there, their EMS and fire people, pretty much a contingent from all the emergency services of Potawatomi County. There were elected officials from the state level there. I saw, I think I talked to Senator Hawke. I heard Representative Phillips was up there the next day. I didn't happen to run into him because I wasn't there that day. But I guess, I don't know exactly how to say this. This is kind of a big deal. There's not a lot of people around the state doing stuff like this to prepare to this extent. And if they are doing it, they tend to do it as isolated units as opposed to a cooperative sort of program, at least in terms of development and execution, that we've got here. When one walks into that and watches it, it looks like mass chaos. But in all honesty, if something like that, or we're unfortunate enough that something like that happens in Manhattan or Riley County, it's going to be mass chaos, and so the way you prepare for it is to simulate it, and that's kind of the environment we try to create. I don't know if any of you had the opportunity to get up there and see that. I would encourage you next summer because they're all over this summer. I mean, we did three of them. I think they're on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday of last week. They're an all-day affair. We have sessions in the morning and afternoon, two sessions each in order to run as many people as we can through. It's good to see, A, all the emergency services working towards the same goal, which is the mitigation of risk and resolving the situation as quickly as we can, and to know that we've been able to do that by virtue of developing jointly a plan that puts everybody in a position to do what their agency is best at and to succeed at doing it. So it went as well as they ever go, which is to say, anytime you run three people through scenarios that they don't expect, they will do things wrong. But when you do that often enough, and we're now in the third year, they begin to understand more holistically what it is they need to do, generically speaking, and they learn how to apply those broad generic philosophical rules or principles to specific circumstances that they encounter. One of the things that happened this year, just as a quick example, is that one of the particular teachers who was assisting as role player had decided she was herself going to generate as much chaos as she could by banging tables and insisting that officers come over and help people initially. And, you know, this is outside the realm of what we've established in terms of how these, how the emergency responders are supposed to react. And in most scenarios, people eventually figured out, and only one did they not, that they had to get her out of the equation. And it was interesting to watch how they did that. Some of them frankly told her to sit down and be quiet. Others insisted that, you know, I need your help getting this person out of the building, who was partially ambulatory. And once that they did, nobody let her back in. You know, I mean, there are different ways to do these sorts of things, to manage the scenarios. And when I watched it, that's what I saw them doing this year that was lacking more in the first year that we went through it. So it's a good thing. I hope the public feels some sense of assurance that the local emergency services are on top of those sorts of events, and to the extent that we can expand it and involve as many people as possible and as many organizations as possible. That's a good thing. I didn't have anything else to report. I'm open to questions on any of those things or anything else you might have some questions about, or I could just go away if you're done.
I'd be interested in an update on the shooting range. That's kind of something we want to hear about every month when you come.
I don't have one.
Every quarter or whatever.
And in fact, at the intergovernmental luncheon yesterday, I inquired of county commissioners and county council, and just kind of let them know, look, you know, from the PD's perspective, the clock's ticking. That current range expires in the middle of next year. I have no additional information to report. Last I knew, they were discussing how best to deal with the property issue, but I know nothing beyond what I told you last time. My apologies.
Okay. Are there other questions?
Thanks for the update. Although kids are not in school, schools never really shut down, so I'm glad those practices are happening. We went with RCPD and City, K-State, they all went to the International Town Gown, and they all, we all met after they came back and came up with a few priorities.
I believe it was Captain Hagerty, wasn't it, that went from the PD?
Yes, Tim Hagerty was in it.
Right, right.
So one of the, you know, discussion points in how to work better with the K-State PD, RCPD, and the students and everybody that come in, the communication part. So I just wanted to know, August is going to be, you know, when everybody starts coming in, what are some measures you take to communicate to families that are coming in as far as how to get from one place to the other? Are you more lax? Do you have more staff or police officers out there to give guidance instead of ticketing if they're not going the right way? Because most of them are not familiar with the city of Manhattan or roundabouts and all of these things.
Well, if you're talking about traffic, I can tell you that you're correct in asserting that generally when students return to town, we notice an increase in the sorts of violations that are typical of people who aren't familiar with the local area. I mean, everybody knows what a red light is, okay? So if you run a red light and the cops see you, you're probably going to get a ticket. On the other hand, people sometimes don't understand, for example, the flow of traffic through Aggieville, and you'll see people turning their own way down one-way streets and these sorts of things. And I can tell you that officers are generally more predisposed to issuing warnings than they are maybe later in the year. There are other things we do jointly with K-State. We've had for a number of years, and I worked this out with Pat Bosco a while ago, issued, in fact, I believe they're still putting them out. I guess I didn't actually check last year, but I know they were the year before, letters that are in the packets that go to incoming freshmen because they have these meetings for, you know, new students. And so we try to provide them some information there that helps maybe set the tone and provide some expectations in terms of what is and what isn't acceptable, and the sorts of things we look for enforcement-wise. I don't know if that answers your question or not, but we do some of those things.
It does. And just, you know, I think you do a great job on social media, and students are very involved in it. So I would look to that also as one way to communicate, especially on that week when everybody's coming in, they're not really sure, and they're trying to find their apartments or their dorms or whatever it is, whatever precautions they're taking or how to stop an officer and ask for help, or how does all of this look. I think Haley does a terrific job on it, but it's, and I know people pay attention to that. So that's just another method to use.
Right. You know, I'd not, I'd not remember to mention that, but I know that one of the things that we kind of concentrate on a little bit, a lot of times people come to Manhattan, and they're coming from very small rural communities where you may not even lock your doors at night. I grew up in a town like that. This isn't the same way. If you're a student, you come to school here, and you leave your apartment unlocked or your dorm room unlocked, and you walk out, and your computer's laying there. It may not be there when you get back. So these are the sorts of things I think we can use our PIO to inform on. I do know that she usually has a blitz plan for the time the students return. I've not talked with her about what that is this year, but I'm confident that it will occur. Yes, sir?
Given that each one of the events is slightly different, on the active shooter planning, are you in general terms satisfied with the level of planning by the schools?
Yes, I think so. And it's kind of interesting, and I didn't mention this, but 383 always makes a habit of having quite a few people there. I think initially, they kind of concentrated more on administrators, but lately, there's been at least as many teachers, for example, as there have been administrators. And one of the interesting things we do, and I've got to give kudos to MFD for this, I mean, we may have beaten them in the Battle of the Badges, but they kind of do this for us. They, it's a fire term, I think. They have what they call a hot wash afterwards, in which they kind of cover, okay, this emergency service, what did you see? What could you have done better? They go through the emergency services, but they also have people who have the same sort of conversation with teachers, not so much from the, and administrators, not so much from the perspective of what could you have done better, but what did you see you have questions about? Because sometimes the view that they have of what the cops and the fire guys and the ambulance guys had ought to be doing is markedly different than how we plan to deal with those scenarios. And again, I don't want to go into a lot of the details, but that has all the potential in the world to create friction if their expectations are out of alignment with what our operating guidelines are. So we make every effort to kind of back-brief them on it afterwards, and it's kind of an eye-opening experience, you know, for them to say, or for them to realize that the first thing that happens when somebody comes in the door is not to run around and take care of the wounded, because that may not be the biggest threat. And so what we've done is we've prioritized how we respond depending upon what the scenarios are, and we kind of try to explain that to them. But generally speaking, yes, I think, I can tell you that Michelle, their PIO, has been at every one of these and is fully supportive of it and works with their administration and with their teachers as well, whoever it is that shows up, to help us facilitate that. And I think, I think planning-wise, they're okay. You know, it's like us, everything could always be better, and they know that, but I think it's okay.
My assumption is that the first agency called by the USD is RCPD. And when you mentioned that these organizations from various places are showing up, are they basically in an observation mode? I mean, I guess my concern is that all of these things have to be managed by one organization and the rest integrated in where they're needed.
Right.
So can, I know this, some of this planning can't be discussed too openly, but can you-
I can talk about that. That's easy enough, right. We use the incident command system approach to the planning. And so if other agencies were, for example, to show up, and that's not unheard of, by the way. So for, to give you a different example, when we had a shooting out at the hotel on the east side of town a couple of years ago, we had we had officers from at least three, if not four, different agencies show up, but we established a command post, and one person was there and took charge. Everybody, I think there's enough familiarity with the ICS system statewide that everybody kind of understands conceptually how that works, and it hasn't presented us any problems. So, I mean, other than the chaos that typically results in a situation like that, it hasn't caused us any problems so far. In terms of the training itself, I can tell you that in Potawatomi County, they were interested enough, and I can't recall whether it was the school district or the police department or sheriff's office over there, or maybe some combination of the three of them. They contacted us and asked that we come over and help them facilitate the same sort of drill over there, which I think we did last year. The good news to that is, everybody now, at least in a two-county area, has been exposed to, if not being completely familiar with, the process and the fundamentals and the philosophies and that sort of thing. So I think that's a good thing. To the extent that we helped facilitate that, great. I know Lieutenant Shook, who was heavily involved in developing this, got that request from him, and he came to me asking if it was okay, and I said, not only is it okay, I think it's a darn good idea. Get over there and do it. So.
Well, the fire chief just showed up, so maybe he's got a-
His ears were probably burned it, yeah.
He was kidding.
All right. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Next is part of the work session, and I don't know whether, I guess, I guess I will divide it up into a couple of pieces. Yeah, we have the utilities update for water, wastewater and stormwater funds, kind of upfront first.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. I'm pinch-hitting for two staff members. So Brian is out of the office this week, and Rob is as well. So they prepared this PowerPoint. I'll run through it. A lot of it is repetitive to what they've presented to you previously in the year. We're obviously into our cost of service study, and it's first recommendation here on the equivalent residential unit method for assessing stormwater. We just started doing that. We adopted that ERU method in December of 17, and this summer was the first time those rates hit our residential and commercial users. We evaluated that impervious area on lots and assigned really a value for each residential and commercial user. That 3,625 square feet is where we landed on residential lots. We were looking at the modeling to indicate just how long we needed to flatten out that rate in order to keep it consistent then from year to year. And there's a chart here in the next couple of slides, but if we didn't make this adjustment, we were going to start seeing our stormwater fund into a negative balance in 2024. So in 2018, commercial users were spending about $3.96 a month. Our residential were at $5.34. And you can see each of those growing to that $7.55 a month rate by 2022. A comparison, Rob had Hibachi Hut in there. I changed it to El Patron. But those are some businesses in the community at that rate in other communities versus where we are currently. So we're still comparatively speaking, less than most of the communities and those properties and businesses within those. But you can see MHK in the middle there compared to six other communities and their rates for stormwater. The recommended fund balance is in the red. We had the projected beginning fund balance based on our increases. And again, we obviously get fairly close in '21 and '22, and then we start gaining that separation. That separation will allow us to be more aggressive and integrate a lot of our stormwater improvements that have been part of our master planning for several years now. I would comment, a lot of chamber members in the audience, we did take this increase, and we take this discussion to a lot of their business councils and talk to them about these increases. So it wasn't just a residential education. We also took part in that commercial education as well. Rob and Brian put together these major capital improvement projects. That gap won't be held steady or grow. We obviously have a lot in the queue, so that funding balance will clearly be part of future expenditures that we will make to overall increase that stormwater experience in Manhattan. I think Jared pointed out, in our community survey, one of the top priorities from our community was addressing some of the stormwater concerns, especially in Ward districts 1 through 7, the original platton portion of the community that is impacted because it's at the bottom end of that bathtub for every event. So Fifth and Houston, I know we've got some projects in design right now, but here's a list of what they see through 2026 as those major projects in the community. As we mentioned, it's got that five-year flattening program. Even though the project fund balance exceeds that proposed operating expense, it was a primary goal to grow that so we could get more aggressive. The 3% is what they have forecasted, starting in 2023, to grow on an annual basis to keep up and keep pace with those future projects and that fund balance. Quick overview, I know they've spent a lot of time in front of you, especially with that comp study, to look at the projects, prioritize them. As I mentioned, we know they're out for the Fifth and Houston project. Olson is in that design phase right now. I believe it's Olson's, but I'll check. But they're really looking at that, and that'll start at that bottom end and start making our way to the northwest part of the community. Questions, comments?
One of the big things out ahead of us is- One of the big things out ahead of us is the levy. How do we, even though we'll get funding, I hope, from other sources, how do we integrate that into this kind of calculation? Do we just figure that at 10% of whatever it takes, or is it even in this mix?
It's not currently in the stormwater fund forecast, and Ron and I were just talking about that this morning, he can jump in here too, but there are other ways, we've talked about accomplishing that debt. Obviously, bond and interest is, you know, a source, stormwater fund could be a source as well. We really haven't pinned it down, we obviously need to get through design, which we're just now receiving our grant to move forward. There are some opportunities to look at additional grant funding for the construction itself, which we anticipate. I think finance has forecasted around eight million, you know, for our share of this, and Bernie will highlight a little bit here about a potential sales tax coming back to the community to look at projects like this, like the airport, things that we know are on the horizon, that we know are operating fund. Today, with the mill levy, with the tax lid, we're just going to be strapped with revenue sources that we can generate for projects like that, potentially talking about a sales tax that could help us with that.
Yeah, I would just add that I think there are a number of different sources. As Jason said, the first expenses we'll have is our match on the design side of things, and right now, we're looking at using a project account and running that out with some temp notes probably, or possibly repaying that from some portion of the funds. We did budget a little bit in the stormwater fund for some of that design, but I think we have plenty of time when we get to construction as to where we want to pin that down, if we want to go for, as Jason mentioned, some type of sales tax support. We do think that, for example, one of the discussions we had this morning, we were covering some of our other utilities such as water and sewer, the state has a low-interest loan program for that, and we think it might be possible that some of the stormwater improvements in the Clean Water Act might afford those low-interest rates, which would be cheaper than, than bonding it ourselves. So I think we'll have a number of different options. We haven't seen any federal utilities infrastructure program rolled out like there has been for transportation, but we have heard that there might be, so that could be another angle as well.
Was that reminding me, was that 33 million?
I was thinking it was around 27, it's in that, in that range, depending, and it will likely be a multi-phase project, so just, so you're not biting it all off at once, and it'll be dependent on federal appropriation of the construction dollars.
Good, thanks.
So Jason, you said you talked to the businesses. One of the things we also want to discuss was with the schools, as they were doing their budget session, were they also involved in the discussion since they cover a lot of the properties?
Correct. Brian and I sat down with Eric, and from a budgeting standpoint, we tried to give them a heads-up, obviously about almost a year in advance, so he appreciated that. They felt like they could work that into their budget for the impact in the rate increase starting this summer.
They have any concerns, or they understood it?
They understood it, you know, anytime we increased rates, clearly, you know, the water discussion came back up, but he understood that too, but we got into this a little bit more, and they've got a lot of schools at the bottom end of that bathtub, so when they see those streets fill up with water, they understand, you know, there's some infrastructure needs there too.
Jason, you might throw that slide seven back up on the five-year. I guess that's not it, so the, just the rates that were charged in...
That one or the...
No, keep going, there you go. So you might just recall that, you know, if you look at that 2022 number, that's really the number that would compare more so with what all those other communities are charging. And what we heard from the commission was, is that we didn't want to go there all at once, so, and then what we talked to the business community about and others is that we would do a five-year phase-in plan to get there. So we've just, we just started the 2018 charges July 1, so it didn't have a lot to report on for feedback, you know, and some folks are, have, or just are getting those bills as a result of that, so certainly more to come in the future, but that's, that's the way we've implemented it, and that's the five-year plan for achieving more revenue in that particular fund on a more fair basis.
And I know we used utility inserts to educate folks in advance, so we were out this spring and early summer with inserts, letting them know these increases were coming forward.
That was the stormwater. And Randy?
Randy DeWitt, the Assistant Director of Public Works, and who oversees the water and wastewater.
Water and wastewater.
Yeah.
Thank you.
New and used.
New and used.
That's a good way to put it.
They won't let me put it on the business card.
Okay, Commissioners, again, like what Jason presented to you for the stormwater, this is primarily more of an opportunity to review the cost of services, the implementation of the new rate structure, and kind of where we've been over the next, over the last six months. And obviously, since this was a work session for budget, we can talk about water and wastewater budgets, that's something we want to talk about. So, of course, cost of services studies, rate structure, and rate increases that were recommended were implemented on January 1 of this year. Fortunately, relatively few issues with the implementation of those rates. We took some time, finances were early on to update a lot of our forecasting spreadsheets and caught up, and we've gotten where we want them. After six months, we're looking at, you know, we're basically meeting the cost of service projections on the water side, but on the wastewater side, our revenues are below our projections, so we're not quite meeting our expectations. But there's some good news to that as well, but, so, lastly, just in general, rate increases were pre-programmed for a three-year phasing process. And in 2019 and 2020, all of our projections are based on a 5% rate increase for both funds. And then after that, subsequently, the rates are projected to be inflationary, so our models and our forecasts are showing a 3% increase.
Let me ask you a quick question while you're on that slide, Randy. I didn't quite understand how we had wastewater down and water fund meeting, because as I understood it, the wastewater is calculated based upon a some-month average of the water used, that is, you see how much water's coming in, you calculate how much is going to flow.
I can show, I'll show the fund balance projections a little bit later, but generally, what we've looked at is, the consultants' models were based off of 2015 data. When we went through that process all throughout 2016 and 2017, we were updating a lot of our expenses in that model, because obviously, it was a three-year process almost. One of the things that contribute to that, we think, are the fact that up to 2015, we were experiencing 250 to 260 new connections a year. We're not meeting anywhere near that, but that's, not to say that's the only reason. The other reason is, like you mentioned, the winter quarter average is our primary tool for billing, billing our customers, primarily our residential customers. I don't have any information in the slide, but I do have some data here, but that, since 2015, that total winter quarter average, you know, the units that we bill per month has gone down quite a bit. So, including K-State, which, which we bill on a winter quarter average, in 2015, we had roughly 98,944 units billed per month. This year, our winter quarter average is down to 88,121 units billed per month, so that's over 10,000 units less per month. I think in the memo, I mentioned that over that four-year span, it's about a 10% drop. So while customers are going up, not quite at the rate we expected then, consumption is going down. So you've got some diverging trends there that unfortunately are resulting in those revenues that we were anticipating for 2018, 2019, and 2020, as you'll see in the fund balance in the memo, and then I'll show here in a second, we're about $1.5 million less than what we were projecting, so. Get a little bit more into that when I pull the graph up here in a few minutes. So, obviously, this is a lot of information that's been presented before, but basically, when we look at rate increases, we always look at customer impacts. This is just a, you know, another summary of what we view as our six categories that we want to assess as far as the amount of, the volume of water that a customer consumes. Of course, the average numbers are based on AWWA recommendations of seven units per month for residence, residential customer, and 15 units a month for commercial. I tend to think that the true average business customer falls in this category, 20 units per month. This is more like a hospital or, not your typical office business, so I kind of view this as more of an average, that medium-volume user. And just a general table, I'll show these for the water and sewer and the combined, combined utilities, but again, the three-year phasing program that we implemented and all the different rates for minimum charges, unit charges, and capacity surcharges. Just a bunch of data here. The more important thing that we want to show here is that those customer impacts with that 5% increase, looking on the residential average, you're looking at $1.28 a month increase, and about $15 annually. On the business side, what I think is a more prototypical customer, the medium, you're looking at about a $2.82 a month raise and $33.82 a year. That's on the water side. Again, same information on the wastewater side, that's what the individual rates are going to be, and then more importantly, the customer impacts for the residential average, $1.71 a month increase, and on the business, $3.87 a month increase. Combined, this doesn't include stormwater, so it's just water and wastewater, so that's what I oversee, obviously, so residential average total increase for both of the utilities is $2.99 a month, and on that typical medium business residential, it's $6.69 a month. And just a, just a snapshot of all the rate increases over the, over the years from way back to 2008, when we didn't increase rates through the, the years where we were planning for capital infrastructure improvements at the plants, and then the three-year phasing. Again, just reiterating that after 2020, our revenue projections are based on a 3% annual increase.
So Randy, what does that look like for like, I'm sure you must have talked to the golf courses?
Yeah.
Because those, those would fall, I don't even, not even the high.
Yeah, they're, they're in a whole other category, you know, the golf courses, K-State, our wholesale customers. Fortunately for them, on the water side, that individual unit rate went down, so they're seeing significant savings on the water side. On the sewer side, it went up, that's why I like to look at the combined bill. I believe, I don't have obviously the information here, but for those high, high-volume customers, the increase from 2016 to, sorry, 2017 to 2018 is actually about break-even, or actually, I think it was actually negative, so they're actually paying less this year for a combined bill. And I think at the end of the three-year phasing, if I remember right, that's when they were going to be catching up to roughly their 2017 bill. So actually, they're standing to see a lower bill throughout that three-year phasing process, if I remember correctly.
Assuming they're using the same amounts of water?
Yes.
They're not, they're using a lot more.
Summer's rather hot, so...
There was another, another chart somewhere in the briefing, I think it was the one that came out last Thursday, but it had a business high. The business high was the...
Okay, yeah, yeah.
That would have been my assumption.
I forgot.
Those guys did look like quite an increase.
So, yeah, I did provide that information in the, in the memo. It isn't a significant increase, but like I said, it's, they are still, they should be less than where they were in 2017.
They're going to use a lot more.
You know, K-State, it's, it's pretty apparent, you know, like I mentioned, on the sewer side, they're using substantially less water in the wintertime, because their winter quarter averages went down significantly, talking about almost 3,000 units a month, so.
But your material shows that all categories are going to go up by 5%.
Yeah, that was the, the hard part about last year was that you couldn't really say it was a 5% increase, it was different all across the board.
Yeah.
As you can see here, this year and every year from here on out, it's a part of the phasing process. That first year was different, just because your rate structure's completely different, so it's hard to be apples and apples.
We knew that from the consultant that came, that there'd be a change, and then from then on, it would follow a pattern.
And those rate increases also are going to be implemented with connection or system development charges as well, so it's across the board.
Because I think it's important that we be equitable as, as we go.
Going back to the, this cost of services study, I mean, it was talked about that the previous five-year flattening process was the recommendation of the 2010 study, and that was, you had residential users that were basically footing the bill, and they wanted to shift that burden to the higher-volume industrial users to be more equitable. I think with this study, we found that maybe it was a little bit of an overcorrection, so you had residential customers and low-volume customers that weren't increasing, they weren't seeing their bills increase hardly at all for that five-year flattening program, and the impact was all on the, on the commercial and high-industrial side. And with this study, like I said, with the higher-volume users, particularly on the water side, with the unit rate going down, they stand to see the benefits.
Okay, moving on.
I'll kind of skip through these, these are just showing that same impact graphically. I tried to show, this is the commercial, and I just tried to show that through that three-year flattening or three-year phasing and after, we're still in line as far as the average bill for a commercial customer increasing at that, basically that same rate. So the more important graphs that we, we show you guys every time are the fund balance reports, and as I said, the blue is obviously our, our current projections, red are recommended fund balances. The new items that I included here, I forget to click on it. The, the dark, the bold dash line represents what we thought that projected fund balance would be with the cost of services study and that, that implementation process, so they can see we're, for the most part, meeting that projection. And then the lighter dash line was where we were at before we implemented. So the end goal being, you know, the end of that 10-year modeling period was adequate fund balances in 2025, and as you can see from this chart, obviously, we're, we're going to meet that, or we're projected to meet that, still a substantial improvement in that fund balance in the out-years. And a simple, simple chart that shows how our revenues and expenses fluctuate from year to year, blue line being revenues. Blue line being revenues, red line being expenditures, and the dash line being our debt service payments. So wastewater side, I mentioned that we're not meeting our revenue projections initially. Again, green is our projected fund balance, red is recommended. Darker dash line is where we were projecting that fund balance to be after the cost of services studies recommendations were implemented. The light dash line was where we would have been if we hadn't done anything. One of the main things we wanted to accomplish with the rates was to kind of fill in this bowl. And as I mentioned, 2020 is our low year. We're about $1.5 million short in that projection, so we're short half a million dollars a year in revenue, basically. On the bright side, you know, looking at the end goal, that 10-year modeling period, we still show adequate revenues in those out-years, and they're significantly higher than expenses where we should be able to meet those fund balance projections.
So this, when we look out on the right-hand side, then it takes us to 2024 before we meet what we think is the required fund balance.
Yeah.
Correct?
And like I said, the recommended levels are still going based off of industry standards that were implemented in the 2010 cost of services study. It's three months of operating expenses and a year of debt service. That's a lot more conservative than even what our consultant with this most recent study recommended. They wanted, he wanted to also account for inflationary costs out through a 20-year capital improvement plan. So if he had had, his recommendation initially was strive for a 15 to 20, or 15 to 20 million dollar fund balance, which I don't think anybody here feels comfortable with. So I will note that, you know, one of the reasons we see this dip here, we do have a very aggressive capital improvement program on the wastewater side over the next couple of years, this year and next year. I've kind of got a lot of work ahead of me as far as getting projects done. So just seeing the next slide here, our revenues versus expenses, pretty decent hump in the 2018, 2019 years. So our capital expenses are going to be fairly high over the next couple of years. And that's primarily one of the reasons for that hump. So like I said, I'm disappointed with this, but at the same time, I'm still very optimistic about the future of the fund because, I have showed on this slide, projections, if we keep the current proposed rate increases, if are, if we don't incur any significant changes to our capital improvement plan, which, you know, it's very possible we will, we should have adequate revenues to improve that fund. I don't foresee any major changes in our expenses in this time period, other than there's going to be some land acquisition projects that were the recommendation of the facility plan. Those are not factored in here yet, but we're talking about probably a couple million dollars worth of land purchasing. But other than that, most of those facility plan projects are scheduled to kick off in that 2023 to 2025 range. Of course, you know, the debt payments for those won't be till after 2025, so they don't really impact us that much in this current 10-year window.
I think I saw something that was 665,000 for land acquisition. So that's spread over, if you're saying that their total is a couple of million, then is that six times, 665 times several years then for this acquisition?
I'd have to, the only one I know of right now that is programmed is going to be for the water wells.
Right. That's the one I was looking at.
And that is actually programmed. We haven't really started the process of studying exactly where those are going to be. We haven't done any well tests or anything like that. But based on the recommendations of the facility plan and the decommissioning of existing wells, I don't anticipate the purchase actually happened for, you know, until 2020 or 2021.
Thank you.
And I haven't been through a land acquisition process with the city. I would assume that we would purchase that over a 10-year period, just like any other project.
I don't think I have either.
It varies.
Yeah, so.
Okay. I was just going to add that on the wastewater side, obviously, you know, we'll watch those revenues. And if we need to stretch out the expenses accordingly, that'll certainly be an option for us. As Randy said, it's fairly aggressive right now, and some of that can be adjusted accordingly.
I will note, on the land acquisition, you know, a lot of these projects that we have coming up, we're going to utilize those 20-year loans through the KDHE. But one thing they do not allow in those is land purchase. So they will not fund land purchases through that loan project process. Another factor that we always take into account, and you've seen this, this doesn't change, this hasn't changed from any of the other presentations, the affordability factor. And this is really geared just towards the residential customer. But, you know, we've always talked about affordability is a one, and it takes into account the average bill versus the median income of the community. So you strive for being under one. Just looking at where we've been in the past and where we're going to be in the future, all things, you know, if they happen as proposed, we should have what we would consider by the numbers, affordable water and sewer, or water and wastewater rates. So that's really all I have to talk about on the rates themselves. I've got a whole list of projects if, that are on, if you want to talk about any of them. I also have some, a couple items about maybe what's coming in the next six to 12 months ordinance-wise that we'll be presenting to you. I didn't specifically talk about it in the memo, and I don't have a lot of information slide-wise to present to you, but since it is budgets that we're talking about, just looking at the water and wastewater fund and our operation and maintenance budgets for 2018 to 2019, total operating expenditures from 2018 to 2019, on the wastewater side, or the water side, there's an increase of 6%. And on the wastewater side, it's a operation and maintenance budget increase of 1%. That doesn't account for a lot of the larger capital improvement projects, things that we have out for debt service, loan projects, and transfers to the general fund. So if you have any more questions on the rates, I'd like to kind of move forward on some of these other things, just to give you an update, or if you want to talk about specific projects that I've listed.
Yeah, just again, can you remind us, I mean, I just did some quick addition here. There's a, in 19 to 22, there's Northwest Transmission at nine, but the rest of it adds up to somewhere around nine by itself. So given that there's about $18 million worth of projects in here, let's see, is that part of the calculation for those graphs for the out-years?
So all the, all these projects that are listed are within the current CIP and are factored into that fund balance. That particular project, right now, we have it broken into four phases over the course of the next, like I said, several years. It's something that has been identified. It didn't specifically get mentioned in the master or the facility plan update because we already had a program, but it's a very critical, it's a very critical project for ensuring that we can meet water demands in the northwest side of the city.
Is that the one that essentially completes a loop so that we can feed from either direction, or is that...
A portion of it would be. So we have a gap between, we basically have a single main going from our booster pump station over by Seaco Tank up to the Colbert Hills Tank. So that's a single point of failure. A part of this transmission main project would be to close the gap along Marlet Avenue. But the majority of that project is a completely dedicated transmission main from the plant to that area. So along Marlet Avenue, hardest part is going to be, you know, do you go along Turtle Creek Boulevard, go along Caseman Avenue or Caseman Road? So the intention is, first phase of that this year, hopefully, we'll do an RFQ to get a consultant onboard to do that preliminary 30% design and find out what that project looks like.
Then the other thing about the utility budget is that's not something that we would have in front of you as part of your budget approval. We typically wait till later in the year, till we have a more usage history. Obviously, water sales have been healthy through the year so far, and so, you know, we can relook at where we are towards the end of the year as to exactly what that rate adjustment. But we are forecasting 5% on both funds based on the rate structure that was approved previously.
Okay, are there questions from the commission? I think, I think this is probably the right thing to do at this time. I do want the businesses and the residential property owners to know what we're doing, informing them ahead of time instead of getting any kind of shock value, if there is any at the time when they're paying their bills. But I'm also, you mentioned the 10,000 fewer units. Is that typical? Do we just go up and down once in a while, or is this atypical?
I've never really looked that closely at it until this past few years. I don't think it's normal. I don't know what that's like for other cities. I would imagine that with changing building codes, a lot more, you know, low-flow plumbing could be a reason behind it. Maybe people are just more conscious that they use less water in the wintertime, their bill for the year is going to be less. It's kind of hard to say. I hope it's not a, well, change that. It's, if it's going to be a trend downward, you know, that means people are conserving water. That's fine. I'm not going to change how we are projecting our revenues based on it. We'll probably look at what our winter quarter average is for this year and use that for our projections next year, but I'm not going to go back and assume, we're going to go back three years to where we were and use those numbers. I think that's one of the flaws with the cost of service study models that was used in 2015, consumption and projections on growth. And we didn't, I made an error in not catching that when we implemented, that we should have went back and accounted for that in the modeling.
Yeah, just to get an idea, because I don't know what it looks like. I don't know where the dips have been or where we've increased, and, you know, we don't need to.
I got the data from finance a couple weeks ago, and the only thing I have is going back to 2014. And I think they could, if we wanted to go back and look at the averages for individual customers, we can. I think traditionally, for a household residential customer, five has been the typical, five units a month has been the typical winter quarter average. Obviously, it changes based on the size of your household, the size of your home, but...
I was just wondering if the enrollment drop had anything to do with it or anything? I was just trying to figure out.
Potentially.
Where the drops came from.
Like I said, that's, KSU had a significant drop, but they've been dropping since 2015 as well, so, you know, maybe they're more mindful of it.
Okay, that explains it. Thank you.
We can come back to some of this stuff. I just wanted to give you a brief look at what's coming up, things that we're working on, some of the things we've talked about in the past. The first one, right-of-way ordinance, something I'm working on with legal staff and with Rob and Brian, basically having a little more insight on what contractors are doing in our right-of-way, maybe private contractors working on private utilities. We do run into issues from time to time, not knowing where they're at, who's doing what, damages occur. We do not have a permit system in place, and actually, we're not proposing a permit system, but more of a, just a notification system so that when a contractor that's working on behalf of West Star or Womigo Telephone or anybody comes in and they start boring conduits in our right-of-ways, that we know about it.
So we don't have that now?
We don't have a system in place or an ordinance requiring it.
Okay.
So this would require it.
Okay, good.
Not really something that we want to overly enforce at this point, but just to get the process started, we just want to know who's there, who's doing the work, what they're doing.
That's fine. I just wanted to be sure.
It also gives us some protections, you know, like I said, when there is damage. It happens on a monthly basis. Somebody bores a conduit through a water line or sewer line.
Well, there's been a lot of activity in the right-of-way, so I can appreciate that it would be important that the city and you, with your utility needs, know that, what's happening there. Okay.
Other item would be some sewer use regulations. We brought to you some changes for the grease management permit program last year. I guess on, first on a note, that's been very successful. Through six months, we have had no violations of that program, no late permit renewals, no late inspections, so that's working well. One of the things we talked about at that time was looking into sand oil separators for vehicle or automotive-related businesses. I think it was a recommendation of at least two of the commissioners that we should pursue that. So we're in the process of doing our due diligence, researching, sending out surveys, finding out what businesses are there, what kind of devices they have, how are they maintaining it, hopefully laying the groundwork for a future ordinance. Local limits, the third bullet point there, we just got done doing a, what's called a headworks loading analysis at our wastewater treatment plant. And what that basically does is it monitors the level of, we call potential pollutants of concern that are in the wastewater plant influent, and we measure it at the effluent. We want to know about how many, how much heavy metals or arsenic or any number of pollutants of concern are in the system and how well our treatment plant handles that so that we know what we're discharging to the river. Part of this ordinance and the local limits are going to be geared towards local businesses and industries that, you know, maybe they have a special waste characteristic that they're discharging into the system. If we have local limits, we can tell them yea or nay how much they can discharge into the system. So that's something that's very critical coming up. It's a, something that's been being pushed on us a little bit by KDHE and EPA. And then the last one would be wellhead protection, which it's a part of the facility plan update. And it's an ordinance basically to control, or to give us a little more control over the development within the public water supply wellfield as far as, primarily, we're looking for, you know, fuel stations and, although we don't have an ordinance in place, we've had a lot of luck, you know, over the years enforcing that, even though we don't have an ordinance. But this will, this will give us an actual ordinance that gives us a lot more authority over what goes there, so we can protect our source water a little bit more. So.
I've wondered about the wells and how protected they are. They have a case over them, I'm just going to call it that for generic discussion. Is there anything more that's needed? Is that a worry, or is that everything is okay?
So take, for example, issues that we currently have with the groundwater. You know, KDHE has a couple systems in place on our wellfield to protect us from groundwater contamination, some of those resulting from old dry cleaner sites downtown or in Aggieville. So there was, there was some contamination in the groundwater, and we've got infrastructure in place at the head of our wellfield to help alleviate any concerns with those pollutants. It doesn't take a lot for anything to leach into the groundwater to contaminate our wellfield. There's a cone of influence around each well, so when we're drawing down, it's drawing water from, you know, 150 to 200 feet around the area surrounding that well. So it's not necessarily direct runoff or something going into that well, it's something leaching into the groundwater. So like I said, your primary concerns are underground fuel tanks or, you know, say Menards having a lot of bulk storage of chemicals in a outdoor facility. So like I said, fortunately, over the years, we haven't had too many issues with it, even though we haven't had a law in place. It doesn't mean that someday Walmart's going to come and push us for a fueling station on their site, and if we don't have an ordinance in place, we don't have something on the books that says, no, you can't, so.
I'd just add that one of the things we've implemented also for quite a while has been voluntary sampling at our wellheads. So it's not required by the state, but, so we have a better idea of what's in our raw water that's going to the plant and what each well is, might be pulling from different areas. And we can adjust those flows based on some of that as well.
Everything from...
I don't know if it was part of the question, but what about wellhead security?
That's what I was asking about.
It's, that's an item in the facility plan, so we'll have something in the future CIP for closed-circuit television systems. You know, for the most part, our primary wells are off the beaten path out, you know, I didn't say where they're at, no. And a lot of the wells that are within that industrial area are the ones that are set to be decommissioned. So in the future, hopefully, it won't be so much of an issue. We've never had an issue presented where we need to protect it, but, you know, we certainly can look at, you know, putting fences around, you know, fences only, everybody knows a fence is only going to keep people out that don't intend to get on that property anyway, so. So, you know, we went through the process several years ago before I got here about securing the water plant perimeter with the Homeland Security push. I don't know if there was a push for the wellfield or not, but I guess that most of them are in areas where, you know, people aren't there. So, but there is a need to have some sort of camera network out there, which we plan on doing in the future. We have all the fiber network out there already for our skated communication. So, we've actually started putting some in, you know, around Levy Drive where we just installed a new bulk station for water filling. So, it's going to be a conscious effort of ours in the next few years.
And we do have security on our finished water side.
Good.
All right. Other questions? No? All right. Randy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. The next part that we would want to talk about would be the big gorilla in the room, I think, is the 2019 budget. Bernie Hayen, the Director of Finance.
Not at all, Larry. This is not the biggest gorilla in the room. I should add that since Director Shown made the comment about beating the blood drive, I understand that the reason Scott was late, he was on his third donation to try to catch up. This evening, the real purpose of this fifth budget work session is to try to set then what will be the publication notice for August the 7th when we have our public hearing on the 2019 budget. Obviously, we're recommending to the commission, and you've seen this in the memoranda, that we stay with a one-mill increase. That doesn't mean it has to stay there. And I would in fact encourage, if there's clear direction from a majority of you, to visit with their city manager and talk about what other adjustments might be necessary as we approach then August the 7th on that third work session. What I'd like to do just for a moment is to give you a little bit of a primer, I guess, on some of the things that finance has noticed and that management has noticed about the impacts of this budget this year and, of course, the budget then that we're preparing for 2019. Hillary will follow me with more of the details on some of the issues, and both of us will be reasonably brief. What I want to show you here on just kind of a revenue overview is that circled area. If you look at, if you look at the difference between the 2019 and the 2018 budget, I think you get, hopefully, an idea of what I believe is the real reason behind this one-mill increase. In fact, candidly, I think it probably should be more. This is about a mill and a half just on the revenue side. And that shortfall, if you'll recall, and I've discussed this, I think, in the second budget work session, when we budget ahead, we're really, and I know our city manager knows this so well, we're trying to look into a crystal ball, trying to determine what our revenue structure or expenditure structure is going to look like for an entire year, 18 months down the road in effect, in this case, the end of 2019. And candidly, in 2018, looking at 2016 and 2017 data, we simply overbudgeted on the revenue side. And some of that, I think, was just simply something that we couldn't foresee, and especially on the sales taxes and on the franchise fees. In addition, of course, we've had a slowdown on building permits. And I'll take you through this just real briefly if I can. If you look at, if you look at our sales and compensating use taxes, sales taxes right now are about 2.5 percent ahead of where we were this period last year. But I want to remind you, commissioners, that while that sounds good, and it is good, but at least we're maintaining, it doesn't generate very much revenue for the general fund, about 125,000. The other 125,000 goes to the sales tax fund. So, it doesn't really add to the revenue coffers, certainly nothing like we've seen in past years. Franchise fees continue to be an issue. Hillary and I met with BKD Auditting Firm out of Wichita yesterday, formerly Baird, Kurtson, Dobson. And they're going to give us a proposal that I will be visiting with the city manager about on whether we want to go ahead and move ahead with a franchise audit of our major utility providers, West Star, Kansas Gas, and Cox Communications. And looking at the bills that we have and at what they give to us to see if indeed we're making the collection on those franchise fees as the way we should. The non-business licenses, that's our building permits, they are down as Randy's mentioned and others have mentioned before. And then, of course, our municipal court revenues, at least with the activity that I think that Director Shown mentioned tonight, hopefully, we're going to see a little bit of a rebound even yet this year. Nonetheless, in preparing for the 2019 budget, we are budgeting less than we did this year for those four major categories, and that amounts to about a mill and a half, certainly takes up that one-mill increase that we're looking for in the general fund. If you look at our sales taxes, and I wanted to give you a little bit of a historical view on this, it's kind of oddly presented, but I thought it might show up better on a PowerPoint. I stacked them. But if you look at the five-year average and even the 10-year average statewide, now this is all communities that receive sales taxes compared to us, you can see that for the last five years especially, we have just been flat. And I think there's a number of reasons. The one I want to focus on here in just a minute really deals primarily with our military families and military personnel. And to show you how this does impact us, if you look at the rise, it took place back in 2009, 2010 at Fort Riley, both the families in the green and the military personnel in the red, you'll notice a corresponding increase that began to take place about a year later on our sales taxes. Remember, our sales tax receipts, we're not sure why, given the digital age we live in, but they're always two months behind. So, our June sales taxes were really representative of April retail sales. So, when you look at this, there's always a little bit of a lag that seems to be taking place. If you move ahead with this, you can also see, and now these on the Y-axis really shows the percentage change in all of these for graphical purposes. But you notice there was a downturn, and whether that's partial deployments or military families that left as a result of any deployments. But as a result, about a year later, we saw the decline in sales taxes. And then when you look at what has happened ever since for the last five years, which really correlates with that other figure I showed you compared to statewide, we simply are flat. And if you look at what has been taking place on the military side, you'll see that they have probably lost some families and personnel over this five-year period as well. If you look at K-State, and you've seen that before, I believe, at a different work session, you get the same kind of rhythm, but not as pronounced, I think, as what Fort Riley brings to this community. This is a very busy graph, and I apologize for that. And it's, the accuracy of it is there. I think Commissioner Butler has seen this before. But I wanted to show you that, again, if you look at the changes in our sales taxes and the number on the bottom reflect what those amounts are, and you can, you get a sense of how flat they're remaining. Okay? But if you look at compensating use, which are the numbers on the top, and even though they pale in comparison to the sales tax numbers, we are seeing an increase. And I think that is probably attributable, at least in my estimation, to more internet companies, Amazon is a good example, and not third-party providers through Amazon, but Amazon paying the local sales taxes that are due us and that being recorded through the state on our monthly sales tax receipts. If you look at projected expenses, and I have mixed emotions. We, as you know, forecast all of our funds. We really have a sense of where we're going. And I tend to think we probably are conservative on our revenues, a little bit more liberal on our expenditures. So, when you look at these numbers and we go out to 2024, they look eye-opening, I guess, for lack of a better word. But on the other side of the coin, I think there's a lot of truth behind these numbers. The ones, of course, that I want to call your attention to, and I think each of you as commissioners, and certainly I know administration and management know this, our general fund kind of lives and dies with personnel services. Seventy percent of our cost is associated in the general fund with people. And I say that, commissioners, because as we look ahead, and in a minute, we're going to give you a little bit of an overview of some of the things we believe are coming up in the future for the city, some of those are going to involve probably adding people at some point, and especially if the community begins to grow again, as I am convinced that it will. And I think if for no other reason than what we know is taking place on the north end of the campus and the community, it will happen. Yes?
On this slide, my assumption, just looking at the numbers, is that there's a factor applied. That is, if you look at the top line, it goes 1.1, 1.2, 1.3 addition as you go out to the right. Is that you apply some percentage to...
Well, the presumption, the presumption obviously is the cost of personnel services does increase. And so, there is indeed a factor by which that grows. On our forecasting, do you know, Hillary, do we use 3% or 5%? 5% growth. So, it is liberal, Commissioner.
How do you do it with contractual services and commodities? Because 2018 to 2019, that's a $1.4 million increase between those two, and therefore, it's more like $400,000 a year between the two of them in increases.
Those often, those as well follow personnel. Now, on the contractual side, some of that are the utilities that we are paying, West Star, Kansas Gas, those things.
So, are we paying $1 million more in utilities this year than what we would project as an increase in 2020, 21, 22?
I can't answer that specifically. I don't know if we have that number isolated or not. But what I can, what I can show you, and I, again, I know some of you have come in to see some of the things we've done, both on the tax lid as well as these other things. And Commissioner McKee, this is one that I would really like you to come in and take a look at. We now have the ability to look at and to move forward with all of these contractual services and commodities so that we can compare them from one year to the next. Terribly helpful. And we'd be happy to share that with you and give you a better idea. But we will get that information to you in terms of what that increase is.
I would love to see that. I guess it's, I just want to point out the fact that this is work session number five on this, and I've asked since the first work session about the increase in contractual services and commodities. And this just illustrates there is a $1.4 million increase in those areas. And moving forward, we've projected out only a $400,000 increase. So, it's a million-dollar difference in one year than what we project out regularly to be over the next four or five years. And to me, the fact that I don't really understand why that is and a million dollars of it probably isn't attributed to gas and electricity is a problem for me, and it has been since the first work session. And I keep asking for the same data, and we've yet to get it. And it's, I'm starting to get a little frustrated about it because I, a million dollars is a lot of money. And I know more about the outside agencies coming in here and presenting about $50,000 than I do about a $1.4 million increase in our own general fund.
Let me get a, I'll get a printout to the city manager, and we'll get that information to you.
Thank you.
Regarding levies, and I understand, I understand the concern about inexplicable increases on expenditure side. I do understand that because they do tie back to the mill levies. On the other side of the coin, I came in late 2000, the 2001 budget, I guess I inherited. But we started off at that time with about a 4.2-mill levy. What we're proposing right now is an increase of about 2.3 mills over this nearly, what, 18-year period of time. I think I mentioned before that all of your tax bills, everybody's tax bill in this room, every commercial establishment, 11% of that tax bill is what we and you as commissioners are responsible for. Now, that's not the entire city tax bill because it doesn't, you have to add in the library and RCPD. But obviously, those are outside agencies that are not under the control of the city manager or candidly, I guess, the city commissioner as well. And I make that point because that idea of the total taxes that are being paid, property taxes in this town, sometimes you as commissioners, and certainly I think city management, take a tremendous amount of responsibility for that total tax bill that is out there. And I have said before, the past commissioners, I perhaps have said it to you, that I think that is in large part because you are terribly transparent, you ask difficult questions. Sometimes we don't have the information readily available, and obviously, we're broadcasting this at the same time. So, I think this presumption is that when people get that property tax bill, it lands on your shoulders or on the shoulders of the city manager. If you look at it from the broad picture, it's not quite the way it would appear. And that's not to suggest that we don't have areas that we either need to improve or need to become more efficient on, but I make that comment as something to keep in mind as well. One of the things that we've been looking at, and one of the things you'll see momentarily, is whether or not we ought to be starting the discussion of looking at an operational sales tax that is going to be part of the general fund for the future. And what this particular slide shows you, commissioners, with that arrow is to say our current mill levy for the general fund is 5.8 mills. If we had 2/10ths of a cent sales tax dedicated to the general fund, the same level that we have for our street maintenance, special street maintenance fund, it would generate about a little over $2 million, and we could drop that general fund levy by a full 2 mills. And if you go backwards, there would be times that we probably wouldn't even have a mill levy in the general fund had of that revenue been available in the past. It's a consideration, it's a discussion point. Jason mentioned it tonight as well. And it's something that I think the city manager will be looking to your direction to see what we want to do in the coming months. Looking ahead, here's what we have on the book so far. We have, first of all, that consideration at some point. If you notice, it looks like it appears here mid 2019, 2020. I'll always defer to the city managers to when the time is right to begin that discussion of whether or not we ought to have a local sales tax specifically dedicated, in this case, to the general fund or perhaps elsewhere. I also want to mention that we have the Riley County sales tax that is currently in effect, will sunset in 2022. So, that is something else to keep in mind as we start looking ahead and thinking about other revenue options that might be available. In addition, some of the revenue contributors that might, might have an effect, we will be opening that new office building at the K-State Business Park. That'll be opening yet this year. And if you notice on the, on the bottom part of that, the Blue Stem Grill is one of those entities that's going to be part of that new complex. Later on, we just, I understand, went ahead and made a proposal for a grant, a build grant, which is better utilizing investments to leverage development, build. And it replaces, I believe, the old Tiger Grant, and I don't know if management, that's not what it was, Jason? Okay, you were shaking your head. You were surprised that I knew that. I can tell. But whether or not management wants to mention this particular grant and some of the aspects of how it could, I think, complement the North Corridor.
Yeah, the 42 million in project cost, it could cover up to 17 million. We should hear back from the federal government by January. We should hear back from the federal government by January of 19. The reason it grew from 15 is we lined it up with a couple phases of the project that got close to 15, but ended up costing about 17. As we hear back from the feds, we'll let you all know how things go.
And if I understand correctly, I think there's 5.6 billion for projects to be issued nationwide. One of the things you see right below that is the possible online sales tax revenue that could be generated from that recent court order that puts the prospect back on state legislatures, as I understand it. I think that's always potential. And what that, what that could produce in revenue, it could be significant, depending on, of course, how much, how many third-party providers and how much internet sales are currently happening across the community. On the other side, commissioners, I can tell you, this is, this is my age certainly showing, but having worked with the Kansas Legislature and the Kansas Department of Revenue for decades, whether or not we are going to see anything happen anytime soon is anybody's guess. So it's something to keep, keep in mind of. I know I've, I visited with the league already there. Our Finance and Taxation Committee, which I'm a member of, will be talking about that issue as well in the coming months when they meet. Later on, we have NBATH Commissioning that'll be taking place sometime in 2021 or shortly thereafter. Star Bonds also pay off in that timeframe, which is a good thing. Couple years later, NBATH will become fully operational. And then looking out even beyond 2024, our downtown TIF will expire in roughly 2026.
Bernie?
Yes, ma'am.
When you talked about the Building 2 opens, all you mentioned was the Blue Stem Grill. I thought that entire facility we collect property taxes from, is that not accurate?
I think it is.
Yes, it'll really depend on the use, but yeah, that's the intent as well as, I mean, we don't anticipate the, you know, there to be much sales tax really there, but it's the property tax. And then, of course, the, you know, the new employees created, you know, a lot. Will likely live in the community and will benefit from their presence here. It's not a huge marker, but it's significant.
Thank you.
I noticed that revenue has no numbers.
I'm sorry?
I said, I've noticed that revenue has no numbers. But all the slides you're going to show us next on expenses have numbers.
They have numbers, I think, Commissioner, because we have, we planned those projects. We have an idea of what those projects are going to cost and the revenue associated with them in the case of the next slide. I don't think we really know.
My only objection to that, Bernie, is that we've had both our own staff and people from KSU come. And in their briefings, there are numbers for predicted growth, for predicted jobs, predicted revenues, all kinds of things. So that's what I was hoping would be in the revenue side of this equation, so you can get some idea of balance between revenue and expected expense. But you won't be able to generate that tonight, so.
For the public, for the public hearing, I can resurrect this slide, Commissioner, and I will try to have numbers for these. All I can say is probably a week, we are always conservative on revenues and liberal on expenses. Well, speaking of the numbers then, if you begin to look then at those things that we do have on the drawing board that will happen, I think sooner rather than later. And these numbers, by the way, are net. So that we know there's going to be operational expenses, the majority of which are going to be covered by revenues that are going to be generated by these three new facilities. But I'm not sure it's going to cover all of those. I think we're going to be making, and I think Eddie Eastus, our Director of Parks and Recreation, will be making a good attempt to try to make sure that these are as revenue neutral as we can make them. But right now, at least the numbers that we're looking at and the studies that have been put into play suggest that these are going to be the net cost for the Southeast Neighborhood Recreation Center down by the Douglas Center, and of course, the two gymnasiums that are sales tax generated. Regarding the, the cost of these, obviously, sales taxes are going to be covering the two middle school additions. And I'm not sure, I'm ready to say yet, how we're going to, what the funding mechanism is going to look like at the Southeast Neighborhood Recreation Center. That's been a very difficult and long discussion at this point. But hopefully, we believe that future CDBG funds will be used to pay whatever financing mechanism is put into play at that. This makes it look like I'm picking on our airport director, Jesse Romo. But the airport has obviously a number of major projects on the horizon that are going to have to be done at some point. Now, again, the timeframe of these that we put into play here, whether or not they happen, for instance, the reconstruction of Runway 321 in 2020, I don't know. In order to give you a little bit of a feel, you notice at the bottom that, I don't know, in fact, that these will all be 10-year bonds. They may go out 15, but perhaps even 20 on some of these projects that you'll see. But for every million dollar that we have in bond, our best estimate right now is, based on current interest rates for bonds, would be about 0.2 mills for each 1 million in bonds. And that would include both principal and interest. Just as a, just as a tool, so you can gauge as commissioners what this might affect in terms of the bond and interest levy in the future. Also, keep in mind that we continue to pay off 10 to 15 million, sometimes a little less, sometimes more, and retire those bonds every year. And one of the reasons for that is because so much of our debt has been placed on 10-year notes. And so it amortizes rather quick. You've seen the positive side to that with our bond rating agencies, all three of those, Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's, and FIT.
One of the things that's been helpful in the past you may want to regenerate is the, is the bond debt, temp notes and bonds, and, you know, run that out for, let's say, to 2025 or something. So we can all see how it's coming down. I mean, there's some big chunks in there in 2021, 2023. And then these, you know, as all of us know, the bond debt is not going to go to zero. We're going to continue to have requirements to build across the city. So to the extent we can, maybe we can show these as layers occurring at particular times. Because when you look at the point 2-mill addition, you know, that's a scary thing, particularly with the numbers of millions that are contained in these next two slides. But if you see the debt that's coming off, this may in fact stay relatively level to property tax.
Yeah. And Commissioner, we do have that. As I think I mentioned to all of you before, I would welcome any of you coming in to just review our debt forecasting and the structure. It's, it's complex, but it's terribly comprehensive and includes all of these items in there. Moving ahead with other, other projects, some of these that we've won, the levy improvements that we've talked about tonight in the North Campus Corridor, but a little bit of a feel for what we have. And again, the further out we go, the less certain I am, at least, that all of these numbers are absolutely valid. But it's the best we can do at this point as we look forward. And with that, my portion is done, and Hillary will be up here in just a minute, unless there's any questions specifically about this.
I'd like to go back to the slide on general fund expense, just for a minute. When you look at the 2017, for example, and then you take the next column, which is 2018 projected, with the exception of personal services, the rest kind of falls. And when 2019 comes in the budget column, what you find is a restoration that appears to be predicated on 2017, not 2018. So in other words, if I'm drawing this in a line, going from 17 out to whatever it is, 2019.
One of those I can answer on the projected is because of the situation we find ourselves in right now physically. City manager has taken some fairly stringent measures, including a hiring freeze, a travel freeze, and a number of other targets.
$2 million within this projection had to come down. So this, if you compared this to budget, it's $2 million down because we are not going to meet 2019's beginning fund balance if we don't save within these categories. This also goes back to Commissioner McKee, I'd like to answer, if I can, some of yours. We can get the data like Bernie stated earlier. But out of this contractual services, this is a little misleading in terms of what the budget is going up per in 2019, because it's not going up for the 4.3 in contractual to the 5.1. The budget for 2018 is more like 4.9, and it's going to 5.1 for 2019. And that's, the majority of that is gas and electricity, 124,000, and then about 110,000 from software agreements.
So explain that again. So contractual services?
So this is not, this is a projection of what we need to do this year.
We're missing the 2018 actual budgets.
Of the budget.
2018 budget.
So from 2017 budget to 2018 budget, it went from 4.6 to about 4.9, most of it being gas and electricity again. From 18 to 19, we're going from 4.9 to 5.1, with those two majorities being 124,000 in gas and electricity and 110,000 in software agreements. So those are just regular software agreements, what we have to pay that we're already in contract with. So that is the majority there, as well as in commodities. That looks significantly decreased in that projection 2018 for the things that we're having to save and either move to other funds or do this year because we don't have the funds, the revenue is not there. So we're having to do some very extreme things in this column here that in 2019, we're trying to say, no, here's the actual budget and why we lead back to that revenue shortfall and asking for a mill levy increase.
During the public hearing, when we actually overviewed the budget, will we go through something similar like this first again? This is obviously my first.
We can.
We can.
Can, then I would ask that we illustrate that out better of, this is what we budgeted in contractual services for 2018, and this is how much we're taking down. Because as a, like, if you're the average person and you look at a chart like this, it looks like we're increasing that by one point, those two by 1.4 million.
This is an anomaly. This column this year is an anomaly for us.
But let's figure out how to tell that story.
In other years, our projection would be more closer to a budget in a year where you're not having significant revenue shortfall.
Because, yeah, that I, when I saw this, that's why I was like, I, I mean, I've been sitting here looking at these numbers an incredible amount of time, and I didn't understand that until you just explained it, and now it makes perfect sense. But the average person who's going to come here on August 7th and talk to us about a potential mill levy increase is not going to understand that. So if we can find another way to illustrate the steps that we're taking in 2018 to lower that number and why that increase looks so big. Thank you.
We can do that. So in here, Commissioner Dotson, very quickly, so there's some things in here when you start to project beyond your budgeted year. As you all know, we've, it's already complicated to project out the 18 months that we have to budget, let alone a five-year span. So what we do, and this fund being our main operating fund, is we look back five years, 10 years. What was our average percentage increase for these main categories? But one of the things that we haven't done in our forecast, because this would look very concerning, is right now, in our capital improvement program, if you remember from the fourth work session, we have about 1.4 million in capital improvement program in 2020. Now, that's probably not a, just we're going to do that, especially under the tax lid, probably not a legal budget. So we plugged in here an average of about $300,000 for a capital improvement program, saying that's what, on average, the past years, we've spent on a capital program, knowing that some years it's much lower, some years it's much higher, depending on what needs to be done and the equipment that we can afford. So there's some things in here that, projection-wise, you have to look at case-by-case basis and say, does this make sense in terms of what we have done historically and how we project forward? Because if we were to just let the formula ride, some of this wouldn't look appropriate.
Well, the, I guess, the way I'm looking at this is, we overestimated revenue for 2018. And so although some of the revenue is over 2017, it's under what we estimated. Now, as you look ahead, one of the things I'd be inclined to do is based on my most recent experience. I mean, we're hearing from many segments that were relatively flat. Doesn't mean we're going to remain flat, but it does mean we have to be a little bit more cautious for the next two or three years, perhaps, in our projections of revenue and what we're going to spend. It doesn't mean we stop, but it does mean we really look at it hard. So that was kind of the point I was making about, if I drew a straight line from 17 out to 24, it'd have a dip in 18, and rightly so. But should I start my graph in 18, which would lower my presumption about 19 through 24? That, that's kind of where I was thinking about.
It's very, you would not say that for, if expenses are averaging a 5% increase, that sales tax is going to average a 5% increase. So in our forecast, we have 1%, because that's what we're feeling right now. If we saw something historically that made us want to change that, but that's that, where we talk about property taxes and where it comes into play is if your revenue sources are only growing by 1%, but expenditures are going by 5.
But if you allow expenses to rise and you already have estimated, like, let's say it's 1.5% increase in revenue, that gap will grow increasingly wider, which will mean two things. One, you have to gain it back through one of those revenue sources, or you have to reduce your, your expenses. That's kind of where I'm going with this. I mean, you can't, you can't estimate, on one hand, revenues 1% increase, on the other hand, estimate 5% increase in expense. It's not.
Commissioner, I, I understand exactly what you're saying. On the other side of the coin, we have to make the presumption, as we look ahead on expenditures, that this city is going to continue to grow, there's going to be new challenges, new expenditures. If you look at this, back in 2001, we had 242 employees in the general fund. Today, we have, I think, right at 340 employees. And the population over this period of time has increased by over 10,000. So as we put these budgets together, it's, it's a little bit of a difficult issue trying to say, I understand what you're saying, that we ought to be looking ahead on those expenses, perhaps flattening those out. On the other side of the coin, we're always seem to be behind that growth curve of what really takes place across the community. But your, your point's well taken.
Commissioner, I think that's why we would be before you tonight, particularly this category right here, sales and compensating use. That's your reliance, if it's not property tax. Under a tax lid, you obviously have other restraints. I think this is why one of the strategies going forward will be for staff to present to you an option for a potential ballot question for sales tax. Because as we look at these expenditures to support just personnel and COLA and adjustments, right now, the growth of sales tax is going under our current rate, it will not support it. So we, that's why we will probably be back before you with a strategy of what to do with that, because you're locked on some ends there. And if you want to be able to support growth and our main operating fund, there's going to have to be a different strategy outside of property tax.
Well, those of us who are on the law board, as well as on this commission, know pretty much that about 70% of all the cost increases are due to personnel in one way or another. So it's clearly a driver, but, you know, we have to make some attempt to align predicted expenses with predicted revenue.
As we look at those revenues, and Hillary's As we look at those revenues, and Hillary's points were all taken, because we haven't even discussed the tax lid and the impact in the future, as we move out to 2020, 21, 22, and 23, what's going to happen if we don't either find that revenue source and we're forced, the city managers forced in to make some extremely difficult decisions on the expenditure side? Because otherwise, I don't believe that we'll stay under that tax lid.
Sure. Good evening, my hearing commissioners. I have some brief slides for you this evening, most of which you've seen in prior work sessions. I have a few updates from the fourth work session to the fifth work session, and then I'll stand for any questions that you have before we go to publication. Publication will occur this Friday. We have to publish within 10 days prior to the public hearing and give the public advance notice to show up to the August 7th meeting. A quick overview, sorry, is this mic on? I don't know if you all can hear me or not. Okay. For the property taxes for the 2019 budget, we're proposing a 1.3 million dollar increase with 500,000 of it being in the general fund, 694,000 from outside agencies, and 381,000 to support the bond and interest debt payments. Since the first work session, we presented a 3.551 mill levy increase over the 2018 budget. Before you this evening is a one-mill increase. This is for all funds that the city certifies in a levy to both Riley and Potawatomi County, and just over $28 million worth of property taxes. The 500,000 in property taxes to go to support the general fund is about 3/4 of a mill in 2019, with half of that being, or half a mill being worth for personnel services. So for all the things to occur in personnel services that are outlined in your memo, that's about a half mill of the 2019 increase, with the rest following contractual services, commodities, and other. And the personnel services is going up about $384,000 is that impact of the 500,000 for property tax increase. The general fund CIP, since we were before you two weeks ago, the general fund CIP has been decreased from 375,000 to 200,000 in 2019 to help reduce the mill levy with what we were before you last time at a 1.7 mill in the general fund. To get that down a full mill to .75, we had to make some cuts in what we are recommending to you, and I will detail those as well. The options you requested last time at the fourth work session were to look at this mill levy for 2019 in increments. So we broke it down between 1.75, 1.5, 1.25, our recommended one-mill increase. And then if you were to have no mill levy in the general fund, but increase for the .24, which is all of the other funds outside of the general fund, which includes RCPD and the library, you would have to cut another almost $500,000 from this budget. With, before you tonight, we recommend to get to a one-mill increase, increasing the economic development transfer to the general fund. This is something that we've already looked into per the administrative fees and rates. It's something similar to what we do with the utility funds and how we calculate how much work is being done by administration to support the economic development fund within the city, as well as we have a utility billing specialist position that's within our department. When we look at things from the utilities, we try to look at, instead of just a transfer for general administration, are their positions specifically just working on utilities? They tend to be in our department because we have the mixed duties up front of both utility billing as well as other duties. So we have a couple positions funded out, out of utilities there, and we looked at this and said, the title is utility billing specialist, it should probably be paid from the utility funds. As well as I mentioned earlier, a capital improvement reduction of 175,000, a seasonal hold. This means that we recommend holding the seasonal line items to the 2018 budgeted amount. So no increases from 2018 to 2019 budget, and as well as a promotional hold within the general fund, a travel hold, a reduction in the airport marketing line item, a reduction in road materials, and a slight reduction in the property and liability insurance.
What's in that seasonal hold line?
So that is taking all of the line items in the budget that has, that are programmed for seasonal expenses and basically stating that there will be no increase. It will just remain at the 2018 budgeted amount, so it will remain flat from 18 to 19. Park and Rec is the majority. Out of 106,000, they're pretty much 99% of that, with the big two being parks and swimming This obviously creates some operational items that I know departments would be happy to speak to, in just terms of if there's a need to do more, not sure how likely that is with just having a hold from the 2018 budget to the 2019 budget. Around this.
I, I would like to ask about the road materials, and I know it's just $20,000. But my impression was that our maintenance for roads, and I would say materials, would come out of the, the special, the extra $2 million of the sales tax that we voted recently.
As we have the programs and what voters were told during that election, there's about $4 million that's needed. That does 2 million of it, special street and highway does a portion, but there's about $500,000 within the general fund to support concrete, asphalt, and road materials.
So it's 4.5 instead of 4?
No.
No.
No. The special street and highway is not a full 2 million. That fund, it's whatever we get in the revenue for that fund. So between that and the general fund, it makes up that other 2 million.
Okay, it's the, but it is the full 2 million.
It's the full 4 between those three.
With the sales tax 2 million, so that we really commit, still commit 4 million.
Yes.
That's my expectation. Okay. But this, what is this? Road materials, 20,000?
So this was an increase from the 2018 budget to the 2019 budget, trying to do more.
So you're just taking it, taking it out.
And maintenance, so we're leaving it at the 2018 budgeted amount.
Okay. It's just, it's not for anything specific. It is just an amount.
Just for maintenance.
But you needed 20,000. Okay, thanks.
Generally, before public hearing, we tried to give some examples of impact on residential and commercial owners within the city of Manhattan. This is a breakdown of all the options, mill levy options that were given in tonight's presentation. If you were to remain at 1.75 mills, a residential homeowner with a home of $200,000 would pay $40.25 a month for a property tax increase from the city. At our recommended one-mill increase, they pay $23 a month in property tax increase for city services.
Does that increase include the evaluation, or the average valuation increase?
No, this is just saying, at $200,000, if your appraisal is $200,000, your taxable value is 23,000.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yes, well, on the no-mill levy, it's still assuming that the other funds are increasing per the .24 mills that are approved for the Riley County Police Department and the library, as well as Employee Benefit Fund, KPNF. For a commercial owner with a value of $1 million and a taxable value of a quarter million, at 1.75, they'd have a $437.50 increase a month in their property taxes. At the recommended one-mill, it's $250 a month for, once again, a commercial property that's worth $1 million in assessed value. Again, we went over this at the fourth work session. I know Commissioner Butler was not here for that work session, and I wanted to review this again. We are in a situation now with this tax lid that increasing general fund cash reserves is not going to be a possibility. You cannot do it off of property taxes. I don't know that that was appetizing even before the tax lid, but certainly now it's much more restrictive. So for our general fund cash reserves, part of the issue this year is that we always budget a higher beginning fund balance than we have in cash. So each year, we're trying to decide where that's going to be in savings or excess revenue. This year, that's what's compounding this issue, is that we have a decrease in revenue. So departments are having to make up, once again, that beginning cash balance, as well as the decreased revenue. This is not typically a normal scenario in other peer communities. What we're requesting in this budget is a solution to this, which is a loan from the utility funds, only from water, only from stormwater. From the presentations that you saw earlier this evening, wastewater is not in really a fund balance situation for us to borrow money from it, even if we were to pay it back within the timeframe that we're suggesting. With this 1.5 million dollar transfer in 2019, the general fund will be required to pay it back within three years with a 2% interest rate. This is within the purview of the resolution that was passed in 2004. When we look at other communities, as well as the national recommendations, they recommend two months' worth of expenditures. It's 4.8 million. Right now, your cash reserves are $750,000. This will take them to 2.25. It's a big jump for us. It's something that's going to help bond ratings. It's going to be something that really is probably your only option moving through this tax lid. Otherwise, cash reserves are not going to be something that we'll be able to increase because you're going to need anything for just ops, not for a cash reserve situation. But in times where revenue, or you have an extreme emergent situation, right now, you don't have cash on hand to support that, and that's why we're recommending this loan. The loan would have a repayment schedule starting in 2020, with $510,000 needing to be repaid every year. As we discussed at the fourth work session, this could be done in any different way. If you wanted to make the first payment all to the stormwater fund, to make it whole because it's $400,000, and the projects that are coming up, we could do this a myriad of different ways, as long as by the end of that three-year period, there's been an effort to repay it. Commissioner Butler?
Yeah, I read all the things while I was gone on my little tour of Alaska, but, and sent some information back. But some of the questions I've got is, you know, we, we get this briefing on our enterprise funds, and we're raising the rates, but we can afford to borrow money from it. So some people don't understand, how does that work? Okay, now, my understanding is, the rates have gone up, and there's an excess there because we've got some out-year projects we need to do, especially the flood control projects, which I understand. So is it correct to say that, you know, if we borrow this money, we're really just moving it from one pile to another? That it's just going to sit there and do nothing for two, three years anyway, till we, till we do the CIP projects for the stormwater?
That's correct. If we were not to go forward with this, we would still be investing this cash at about a 2% interest rate to get investment income from it. So the amount that will be paid back is the same as if in these, this three-year period, we were to go out to the open market and invest it.
Okay, that, that, it makes sense to me, but just a lot of folks out there just didn't understand it, because on the surface, it doesn't seem to make sense. You know, when you say, hey, we're raising these rates, but we can afford to borrow money, what's wrong? Do you have too much there?
And this has no factor in the 5% that's being recommended to raise rates. We did not take that rate and change it at all. This was absolutely, can the fund absorb this loan for that time period and still be whole? Still be able to function, do projects, be within, as well, an expenditure limit that it can support that two-month worth of expenditures, as well as debt payments and everything else.
Okay, so, so essentially, you know, we're just moving money from one pile to another, but we're not going to spend it anyway, and the stormwater will come up with a 2% advantage out of all that, which may be better than they might get if they just left it in the bank? And that will eventually help us with all the flood and stormwater issues that we've got, because I think we had, I think Rob Brice, there was like $40 million worth of possible projects that we, we're sure not going to be able to fund even out of this, but at least we're starting to make a dent in it. So, so I think we just got to do a better PR job of explaining to folks out there, you know, exactly why this makes sense, and it isn't going to do any harm, and we're, and we're not, we don't have excess money in our water accounts, because we've got a program for some very valuable projects.
Yes, that's a very accurate statement. So when we looked at all of the cash that was already in this budget, it was already in the 2019 budget. When we looked at it, and you look at the percentages, you see the general fund at 3%, and you see some of the utilities' cash expenditures at a much higher percentage. So what you said is absolutely accurate. We're taking that percentage and redistributing it to your main operating fund to say, in the event that this fund has an emergency, that cash needs to be there, but it's going to need to be paid back over these three years. On August 7th, there will also be a public hearing for the 2018 budget amendment. All seven of these funds, I think this is probably the most, definitely in my time here. We typically don't do a budget amendment, but this is all from cash. So this is all cash that was excess from 2017 ending balance, showed up in 2018 because expenditures weren't as much in 2017, and we need to spend it this year for various things. Employee benefit fund, that's all of capers, health insurance. This is cash that now we need the authority in 2018 to make end-of-year expenditures. There's nothing other, that, that's simply the case, is it's cash. And once again, I've stated several times, but the public hearing for the 2019 budget, as well as the 2018 budget amendment, is August 7th at 7:00 PM. I'll stand for any questions that commissioners may have.
When we were talking about the beginning cash balance, were we at 750? Is that where?
Yes. 750 is what we have in the 18 general fund reserves.
And we thought that 2 million or more was a reasonable target for this year, simply as you stated, because I think it gives us a lot more stability when people who are selling bonds for us and so on look at that, and auditors, and all of those kinds of people that are financially savvy. And even though 4.8 is a target, I'm just wondering, this year, if, given that we removed $100,000 from, I guess, what you'd call some flexibility out of Parks and Rec, if, if we can, and I don't know what the impact on the tax lid is, but what I was going to say is, if we were at, let's say, 2.15, and restored $100,000 into that, what we took from a 1.25 mill increase to a 1.0 mill increase in that particular line, does that work? In other words, does it have an impact on the tax lid negatively, or can we do it that way?
No, you would have to end up, in essence, putting a little bit, like you stated, putting, having a cash reserve of a little bit less. So if I'm following you, instead of having 2.25 in cash, you'd have 2.15, and you'd have $100,000 in that seasonal line item. So the net effect is zero on the tax lid. It's at the current tax. It wouldn't change the current property taxes within the general fund.
Because I think, you know, we need to make a commitment to continue to grow cash reserve, so in the future budgets, you know, that has to be accommodated. And colliding. And clawing back from 750,000 to 2 million plus is an important thing to do this year. But for $100,000, we might have a little bit more flexibility to offer in Parks and Rec. I just, you know, I worry about services, and I don't know what the impact of that $100,000 is, but I'm just suggesting that that may be one way to look at this. And then in subsequent years, to make sure we're climbing towards a goal of that percentage that represents 4.8. You know, I mean, we can't just stick at 2 either because that's only a partial solution. So we've got to continue to contribute so we get a cash balance up at what the recommended minimum is.
Yes.
Sorry, my throat's not, I'm not doing too well. But I think RCPD and library are already there, even if we go with a flat mill levy that's already incorporated into the, where it says the zero, I'm sorry, no general fund mill levy increase, it's already in there. When we look at our staff, I'm not favorable of cutting staff. And 270,000 would get rid of, a decrease of 270,000 would be a reduction in six staff members, full-time staff members. So I'm not supporting that. I think one of the reasons our city runs well is because of our staff. And even though we are the last, I think, government agency to publish, I think Riley County already published, I think USD 383 is ready to publish, and they've already made their step increases and COLA increases. And I don't believe they've decreased their staff. So I think it just is fair that we keep at the same level for our city staff. Next year, I think if we are still in a position where we're not increasing revenue, or if we're not flat and we're actually decreasing again, I would look at maybe not doing a step or a COLA or something of that sort. But 70%, if that's the most of our budget, people feel that. People feel that in their services and their expectation for Manhattan. And when you're trying to recruit businesses and you're trying to recruit families to come and live in Manhattan, they notice all of that. They notice what's not being done as opposed to what is being done. So I'm not looking towards cutting staff at this point. I do see some optim, I'm going to be optimistic about this for the future, at least for the next two or three years. It may not come to where we want it to be, but I think Manhattan is a growing place, I believe, with everything that, if USD 383 is projecting more students to come in and they're looking at a new facility, if Fort Riley is actually getting more soldiers back and K-State, even though they've taken a dip, they're seeing some positive growth in the future years, they're projecting positive growth. MATC is doing the same thing. So I think this is, just a lot of things came together for that revenue sources to fall down in a variety of places. But I don't think that's going to be the trend from now on. I think we are in a position where we're still growing, especially with NBA and all the other projects we put into place. I'm comfortable with the 1 point mill levy as far as publication, and we can have further discussion if we need to. I think the cuts we've seen, I've seen this in other government agencies where they keep it flat for so many years that their city starts to deteriorate and you can never catch up. So I don't want us to be in a position where we're never catching up. The property lid will not help us, and I think we do need to look at what we're going to do with our sales tax. How is that going to look? Are we going to look at increasing a little bit here and a little bit there? Because that's going to be ultimately where the sales, where our revenue source is going to be, not completely from property tax, but we're going to be more reliant on sales tax than ever before. And I don't know what the next governor is going to do. So there's a lot of unknowns, but Manhattan is still doing well and it is still growing. And I think the people that live here like the services that we provide, and they're still moving in. So I do, I do think we need to have the reserve fund. I have no objection to that. I think that's the right thing to do for all the reasons that Commissioner Dodson mentioned as well. So that's where I stand on this, as far as publication is concerned. And if we choose to discuss more things, I will just say I'm not in support of decreasing our staff.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I don't want to see us reduce the road materials at all because, you know, that was a big issue, and you've only got a mere 20,000 in here anyway as part of that. Now, we could get that somewhere else. I mean, Ron has cut travel, which I've talked about for a while, but commission travel last year was 11,000. That's what were half this road cut. I'm one that's never been in favor of international town and gallon, which I know some of you were enamored by. How much do we pay them every year in membership dues? It's 400, okay, it's not a huge amount, but I would look at some of those things to shave off. But I think, you know, I'm all for cutting the mill levy, but I think people don't want to see us chop anything out of roads. We've just had way too much discussion on that. We passed a sales tax to get it, so we had 4 million, and I don't want to see us shave a dime out of that. So that alone would cause me to vote no on the budget if we're going to chop the roads. That's just not where we were. We spent way too much time supporting that sales tax initiative to get that done. Can't be playing with roads, you know, at all. On, you know, the issue of personnel decreases, I wouldn't like to see those, but if necessary, I would support it. And that means that we can't find it somewhere else. And, you know, I'm all for, you know, we had union agreements with the fire department. I support those. That was necessary for retention. But maybe we do need to look at these step increases, especially at some of the higher levels in the administration. I know some of you won't like that, but that's where most of the step increases go to. The guy that's out there, you know, doing, shoveling the asphalt and potholes, you know, his increase maybe we shouldn't mess with. But some of the top administration, I've always been a supporter. When we had to cut budgets in places I worked, and I had to cut step increases, we cut it out of the top guys, not out of the bottom guys, shoveling the asphalt, because they're the most important. And I know that's, you know, that's tough on the senior leadership, but my belief has always been, well, it's the senior leadership's job to balance the budget. And if it can't be done any other way than chopping personnel or cutting salary increases, then you don't have the increases at the top. And that's why I advocate, like, you know, certain things that commission does, like commission travel, ours should be zero this year, simply because everybody else's is. And the guys at the top ought to be, you know, shouldering the burden also. And while that's a minor amount, maybe $11,000, it's half of what we want to take out of a guy that's shoveling asphalt. He's very important to me, getting those potholes fixed. And I would like to see this under a mil. I'm glad it's not 53 or 54 where we started, but, you know, in 49, well, that sounds a lot better than the 50. It doesn't, doesn't give me a heart attack, you know, basically, when I see that number of 50. But I was hoping we could get it down to maybe like a .5 increase.
Is that true?
Just tampering with a few other things. I mean, really, and I would see the city staff getting down in the weeds on that, you know, on little specific things, like what are we, what are we paying for, you know, a membership? What are we doing for XYZ, cell phones, all the different things that are out there? Is there a way to do, and I've always advocated, you know, what I call the lean management approach, is can you shave a little bit out here and there without doing major damage? And I know Ron's done a pretty good job of that so far, but, you know, we're asking him to go a little bit deeper, sort of like what you had to do this year, to take care of the shortfalls.
Sorry, Wayne, I didn't mean to interrupt you. The traveling hole, does it not include the commissioner travel?
It does.
I assumed that it did. Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to, I'll, I want to give my comments after public comment.
Okay.
I would like to continue to the, to support the personnel at the rate we've really already looked at and reviewed for a 1.4% COLA and a step raise, whatever your structure. And I can support the 1 mil. I feel like that's a nominal amount. And I'm, I would encourage taxpayers to talk to the law board members with regard to the grand total of what all of these government units are going to have to, what that total's going to be. Operational sales tax, I don't know what I think about that. I know I don't like the name, and I don't know about, it depends on what we, what kind of a package is eventually put together, so I don't have to decide that tonight. But generally, I think we have to be forward-thinking, and I'm interested in this community continuing to look forward and be able to handle the projects that we have to do. And those that are constricting, it seems to me there, it's a slow death with regard to just choking. I'd like for all of us to pray for rain. That'd be the next thing. In addition to all the other weights we have on our shoulders right now.
I think it depends on what fund you're looking at.
Yeah, we have a drought going on here with 11% short, 11 inches short of rainfall for Manhattan. And if that's a, you know, that's something we just don't need on top of the short, the fewer students and fewer military folks. So I would expect that our economy will rebound, and I'm anxious for that to happen. But I don't, and I think it will if we can be positive and continue to go forward. I, you know, next year, I don't know where I'll be, but for this year at least, I want to move forward with this 1 mil.
I think that's why it's imperative, Mayor, that a strategy for that sales tax between now and 2020 start to be more defined because as these out-years, as Bernie presented, we're going to really start to be, feel this internally, we've kind of said the analogy of this property tax lid is almost like a python, just it's going to wrap around you and each year it's going to restrict you more and more and more. So just for things, basic operational things, it's going to become increasingly tough to accomplish them just at the regular level, let alone doing anything more operationally.
I just think about this million gallon water tower that we're planning for some, an out-year from now, and how we'd be able to afford that. You know, you know, there are some out-year projects that for this community to continue to, to deal with the, even the expansion we have, and maybe it's, maybe because we've slowed down, we might need to go a little slower out to that project. But I don't think we, we can afford to just stop. I think we have to at least go forth slowly. Probably not good grammar.
Commissioner McKee, I want to make one clarification. I don't know if I gave you the exact representation for commissioner travel. It will remain at the $10,000 that's currently in the budget. Doesn't increase, doesn't decrease, it remains at the current budgeted state.
That 38,000 is just for staff, so there's $10,000 commissioner travel still budgeted?
Yes.
I'm not particularly worried about that $10,000, but if it makes anybody feel better, if I travel next year, I'll just pay for it out of my campaign funds if that makes people's hearts feel better. But I'm not concerned about the $10,000 travel.
I just wanted to clarify that it's not a decrease.
Thank you. No, that helps.
The, I'm on board with 1%. Appreciate the work that staff's done to lay this out. This is kind of a technique I'm used to anyway, so you can kind of see what the pain is for taking various cuts that have to be taken, and they're particularly difficult when we're this far down into the year. You know, when your forecast doesn't quite work out, everybody in business, everybody in their private life has to make an adjustment. This is an appropriate thing for us to do. I also support looking at the sales tax point two as a way to kind of balance the stool in the, in the future. I mean, the state has the same issue, you know, this balance between property tax, sales tax, and income tax. And we've got, our third leg is fees, which are quite a bit short the past couple of years. So rather than, since we have, I think, Jason, you've quoted like a 1.27 advantage on sales tax because of the high amount of visitors that come into our city. That is probably less of a burden on our citizens that live here than it would be certainly through property tax. So I think that's a good thing to take a look at. I'm also very optimistic about the future, but, you know, we've got to deal with this year and then kind of push on. So again, I appreciate the hard work the staff's done on this.
Thank you.
I want to make one other comment. I left, left it off my list, just overlooked it. When I'm looking at things that could be reduced here, at the beginning of the budget process, I did a little paper, shared it with the commission on limiting outside agencies to 1 mil, which was $575,000. Now, my operational definition of that's different than what Bernie puts up there because you talk outside agencies, you're, you're talking, you know, the police department, everybody else. What I'm talking about is those, you know, ones which could be considered discretionary with maybe the exception of the MPO. And what I was lumping together there, and what we're funding out of the general fund this time, is the Social Services Advisory Board, you know, ATA, some grants, which I think include the MPO and the Good Neighbors Program. And that totals $650,474. So my goal was to keep those to 1 mil, which would be 575. So there's, we're $75,000 over. So my recommendation is to chop $75,000 out of that. I think that, you know, if we made clear that each year, outside agencies, the most you're going to get is 1 mil, it causes constraint. Otherwise, people just come in, ask for the store, and generally, they get it. And one of the things that, you know, when I was looking at what would I cut out of that list, well, I'd start with ATA. And the reason, to me, is pretty clear. When they did their briefing, you know, they're asking for, and I think the commission agreed to give them $129,882, which is way over what they've gotten years past, which is around 50,000. I think last year, it was raised to that amount. The reason I think that's not viable in my mind is as part of their briefing, I think they only collected $130,000 in rider fees last year. So we're giving them more money than they collect in rider fees. Now, that doesn't include the grants they get from KSU, but that'd be the first one I'd mess with, and then maybe the Good Neighbors Program. Really don't want to cut the Social Services Advisory Board budget simply because that committee has done a stellar job of trying to keep the amounts down to the inflation rate, and they've done that the past two or three years. And years before, I wasn't happy with what SSAB did because they seemed to just, anybody that wanted money would get it. But they've made the tough decisions. I was hoping the commission would make a tough decision this year and say, okay, if one of our budgeting goals, we'll keep it to 1 mil and make the tough call. But I'm not seeing that, you know, coming to fruition when, when we're finally done here with the budget. But there is an easy place to get 75K, which doesn't impact the road materials also.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hillary. So there's no additional section on capital improvements? Is there, we ran all that together? Okay, at this point, is there a public comment? If there is, if you'd come forward to, forward, please. There's a five-minute opportunity. Seeing no one, I'll close the public comments section. Is there other business?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make my comments. The, I'm also, I just wanted, wanted to make sure that anybody's public comment didn't change my mind. I'm comfortable, I said last meeting that I thought I saw a way for us to get at that 1 mil. So I'm, I was, I was really pleased to come back and see that that was what the recommendation was because that's what I saw that we could get at. So I'm comfortable with publishing at 1 mil. That's not to say there isn't work still to be done, but publishing with a 1 mil increase, I think, is, is appropriate. I'm also interested to hear more about a potential sales tax because that's one of the things that I had discussed just a little bit in previous work sessions that I've discussed with you, is I truly did not see how in future years, with just COLA increases alone, how the general fund would support those without mill levy increases. Yeah, I just, I, the math never worked out for me, and that was something that was really concerning. And so knowing that we're, we're recognizing that there's a, we need to shift some of that, make that burden a little bit more equitable on sales tax, I think is the appropriate thing to do. The other general thing that I just want to comment to, and I'll probably say... The other general thing that I just wanna comment to, and I'll probably say, I'll probably say the same thing next hearing as well. But I know one of the things that we like to do is, we like to compare our mil levies, our mil rate, to other cities. And I, I kind of poured over this list of all the first-class cities and what their mil levies were at. And what I noticed is a lot of the cities in Kansas that are first-class cities that have a higher mil rate than us are a lot smaller than us and have a lot lower assessed valuations than we do. One of the cities that we compare ourselves to often is Lawrence. And Lawrence's mil levy is about half of ours, a little bit more than half of ours, to be fair. And their total evaluation is about double ours as well. So long-term, if you want to stop seeing so much pressure be put on the mil levy, I think two things have to happen. We have to increase the number of properties that we have on the tax rolls. And I was just frank. When we have budget revenue shortfalls like this, one mil in Lawrence is worth a lot more than one mil in Manhattan is. And the burden is being placed on fewer and fewer people. And when we have these shortfalls, if we have more properties on a tax roll, we can spread out that cost a little bit, and people won't feel that. There's bigger conversations happening about that, especially with our growth out in Potawatomi County. But that has to be a priority for a city over the next coming years. If you ever wanna see our mil levy start to go down a little bit. The other thing that I think has to happen is the state needs to become a partner for municipalities again. Before I became a city commissioner, I knew that the state budget put pressure on municipalities in various ways. But I don't think I fully grasped or realized how much it was. Bernie earlier showed you, when they stopped doing revenue sharing, what did we see? We saw the mil levy go up. And the state has a lot more ways that they can generate revenue, which makes things more equitable. So when I'm up here harping on trying to get the mil levy to be lower, it's not because I think the city of Manhattan is vastly overspending, it's because I do fear that there's a little bit of pressure happening on one sector of our taxes. That's becoming a little too much, and I don't wanna see it continue to happen. So the state has to become a partner in a way of hopefully someday starting to share revenues, and hopefully we see something with the tax increases. But to Commissioner Butler's point about the outside agencies, we see it there too. A lot of the requests that we've seen from outside agencies asking us for additional money is because of cuts that they've seen happen on the state level. CASA asked us for, I believe, $20,000 more this year because of cuts that they saw on the state level. Now, the buck kind of stops with us, and I wanna make sure, especially with the state-level agencies being just in shambles, that somebody that's in the CASA program has one consistent voice when they're going through the system like that. And, and again, the buck stops with us. But when we have to fund increases, there is only one place that we can go, and that is property taxes. And so, again, if you wanna, if you don't want this trend to continue, work and help the city with increasing properties taxes, properties on the tax roll, and make sure that you vote in the November elections, because elections have consequences. And you're feeling those consequences on the state level, and you're feeling them reverberate on the city level as well.
I wanna ask you a clarification on the sales tax idea. Is that advocating increasing the city's sales tax rate?
Yes.
Okay, see, I, I, I like the concept, but I think I don't wanna support increasing city's sales tax rate. And that, I think, is a mistake. But, you know, we've talked long-term about maybe renewing the economic development tax and doing it citywide, so that it includes the Pot County side, which is paying a lower sales tax rate right now. And I think if you took this proposal and packaged it in that, I could support it, and it would be sellable.
So that's kind of one of the strategies, is, is looking at that aspect, and then the county tax doesn't expire till 22, till 2022. So if we had a sales tax, let's just say we did it next November, where we asked to renew it, but as a city's sales tax, obviously, all of the categories that we currently fund out of that would be wealthier, because there'd be a lot more tax collected from a city's sales tax. However, so, but with our funding gap that we're facing, one, one of the options might be at least a temporary increase in the sales tax. I hate to use that term, because the state said we're just gonna temporarily increase the sales tax, but they didn't sunset it. You know, they didn't vote that there was gonna be a sunset on that temporary, they just enacted it. You know, it helped us in our Starbond district, so I can't complain too much about that. But that, that would be a provision until you got to there, that maybe there's a two- or three-year increase of a .2 that would find, bring you some gap funding over time. And, and maybe that, maybe the state does do something right. Now, the state could be a big winner on the internet sales tax, because they're the ones that are gonna get most of that money. You know, the locals are getting the lesser percentages there. So I think there's a motivation, certainly incentive, for the state to take some action in a, in a earlier route. But I think even at the earliest, even if they take action next session, we're not gonna be able to budget for it till 2020. So, and we wouldn't be on a sales tax ballot either. But that would be something we consider, and, and, you know, you might even think about, you know, what do we wanna fund? Do we wanna fund some of those things we've been funding? And, and previously, I mean, we've been relying on sales taxes. And, and the thing that hits us, that hits this year is, is even when we've had some shortfall in the sales tax, we've been okay in the other funds. Everything's down this time. And so we, we haven't had surpluses in sales tax, which we've had before. And so that's really what's kind of hurt us in the, in the short run. And I think with the corrections that we've, that we're making, we'll be able to, to get back to where we were. Predicting what's gonna happen in the future, though, I think the region reimagined certainly is gonna have initiatives. A lot of those initiatives are gonna take time to, to be productive. But I do think, I'm hoping to see some recovery in our sales tax. You know, we're, we, we're still down, we're, we're still down last month, but really, that was, that was April. So, you know, I'm, I'm anxious to see all of those workers out at NBAF that really kind of showed up this summer, peak contributing. So making up some of those things. But I, I think we can generate some options for discussion and, and community feedback to where what makes sense to help build some support for some of those things that, whether it's maybe, you know, one of the things that really jumped out at me in our budget deliberations this year on our, on our social services was more the, the agencies in the alcohol funding. I mean, the shortfalls in the alcohol side were tremendous, and, and that's been going down. And so that really isn't even part of that mix. But that's certainly where some of the, whether it's mental health or some of those other needs are for that aspect. And so maybe a portion of the sales tax could be to help provide additional funds for some of that assistance. So something to think about, and we got plenty of time to, to talk about it and, and develop some concepts going forward. I do, thank you. Very good direction. Appreciate it.
All right. With that, we are adjourned.